Just give it a second to load. Okay, we are live to the public.
Very good. Good evening. This is a call to order for the Jersey City zoning board of adjustment. This is a special meeting. Today's date is March 4th, 2021. This is our call to order. Do we have, and let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag. Which it stands one nation. Justice for all. Very good. Staff, do we have any sunshine announcements?
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this hearing was given to the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, and posted with the clerk on February 26th, 2021. This meeting is being conducted by electronic means in accordance with the Senator Byron M. Baer Open Public Meetings Act of 2020, which explicitly permits a public body to conduct a meeting electronically during a state of emergency. And we have the notice to be marked for the record, please.
Great.
That will be one. Thank you.
All right, shall we proceed with the roll call?
Commissioner Patel.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Bachtah.
Right here.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Green.
Here.
Commissioner Shadid.
Yes, here.
And Acting Chair Donnelly.
Here.
Lindsay, I did just inform you, but you can proceed without.
Josh is here.
I will leave that up to you.
How many commissioners do we have?
We have, well, including you would be eight, so we would have to have someone sit this one out, so we don't have a even number.
I am happy to eat my sandwich off the call or on the call. Does anyone, is anyone on the call who, you know, doesn't want to be? I don't feel that I have to be on this.
Oh, Josh, I'll do it. I'm going to be here for the next two meetings. So I'll do it. I'm actually in upstate New York and I'm just going to drive from Jersey. Is that okay?
Yes, sure.
Yeah.
You'll do it.
That worked out well.
The meeting, yes.
Yes, and I'll see you guys for the next two meetings.
That's great.
Awesome. Thanks guys. Have a great evening. Bye. You as well.
Bye bye.
Okay, so just for the record, we also have, now we have Chairman Jacobs. We have seven present.
Kate, did you want to continue? I don't know exactly where we are.
We are just starting, Josh, with the, with the first case. So, and we were only at the point where we were getting ready to swear in the staff. So why don't we proceed with that and we'll hand the microphone over to you.
Okay, and as staff, would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, and we have Sigmund Ward and Creo tonight.
Okay, thank you. Is there any correspondence?
Nope. All the items that were listed on the special meeting agenda are going forward tonight.
Okay, and any old business?
Nope, all new business is a special meeting specifically for these five applications.
Okay, any adjournments?
Nope, unless there are any attorneys on the line that aren't going forward, just raise your hand. But we didn't receive any correspondence to our office that there were any adjournments.
Okay, well, then we'll start with new business. Case Z20-048. The address is 1041 Garfield Avenue.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. All right, so Stephen Joseph of the Trami Law Firm. I have, Adam is my architect. Adam, if you're on this call, if you could raise your hand. Spoke to him just a couple moments ago, so he should be on the call. There we go. And I see we have Charles. Great. So Stephen Joseph of the Trami Law Firm for the applicants. Counsel, can we confirm notices are in order? I believe this might have been carried.
Yes, Stephen, we have your notices, your affidavit, proof of publication. Bridget, we're going to mark that as A1.
Wonderful.
Be A1 for this application.
And Mr. Joseph, you'll agree to have your witnesses sworn in remotely.
Of course, yes.
Okay, great.
All right, 1041 Garfield Avenue. This is an interesting application tonight. The property is located on Garfield, mid-block between Harmon and Bram Hall. It's adjacent to a power station and across the street from a park. What the applicant's proposing to do is reuse, rehabilitate the existing industrial building and convert it into an ice cream factory with an ice cream retail cafe component at the front of the property on the street. This is a strange application because the property is located in a park zone and parks are permitted in the park zone, not what's there now, which is industrial and not what we're proposing. There are no bulk requirements whatsoever in the, in the park zone. So what we're asking for is a devariance for use. Like I said, the existing property is industrial, so what we did is we did provide some industrial standards on the plans just for context. So you can see what would be required if this was an industrial zone, but it's, what's permitted here is a park area clearly hasn't developed that way. We're gonna get Adam sworn in now. He's our architect. We'll get him qualified and he'll take you through the plan so you could see the context of what we're working with.
Would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? You'll need to unmute yourself.
Yes.
Great, and if you can state, spell your full name for the record.
My name is Adam Womelsdorf.
Spell that, please.
W O M E L S D O R F.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Adam. And I just want to confirm you're a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
And your license is currently valid?
Yes, it is.
And can you just give us a little bit of your educational and experience background?
I have a bachelor's of architecture from the University of Cincinnati. I have a master's of architecture from the Cranbrook Academy of Arts. I've been practicing architecture for a little over 15 years, and that's on my own. Yeah, so.
Okay, we accept your qualifications, but thank you very much for going through it.
Thank you, Chairman. Adam, if you want to go ahead and share your screen and start running through the plans.
Everybody can see that?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so the site is, it's a little over 4,000 square feet. It's an existing building. It's a concrete block building on all four sides. And it, for the most part, takes up the entire lot. As you can see down here, it's just about in the middle of the district. It goes front to back in the district and it's surrounded, the district itself is surrounded by R1 on two sides and on the back. So as far as the requirements, this is, obviously, the parks and open space has no requirements for our use. So as Stephen suggested, we used guidance from the industrial overlay district from the adjacent redevelopment area. So the front yard and the side yard setbacks are 10 feet. We are right on the property line in all cases. The rear yard setback is 30 feet. We're also right on the rear yard setback. Building coverage, there was nothing from the industrial area. We are just about 100% coverage. We're going to reduce that a little bit. In terms of, I'm sorry, in terms of the building area. The building height, we're permitted five stories. It's a one-story building right now at about 14 and a half feet tall. We're staying with one story. We are going to increase the height of the building a little bit, whereas we're adding a parapet around the top of the building. Floor area ratio is 98.2 existing, and we're going to reduce that a little bit. As far as parking, there's, the guidance says it's six spaces. We have one space in the building, which we're kind of treating as a parking space and a loading space. So I'll show, I'll explain that when we get to the floor plan. Bicycle parking, it's, the building is so small that there's really no requirements. We are, we are providing a two-space a little area for two spaces for bike parking. Sinage, we are permitted 15% max in width and 10% in height, and we're going to be below that in both cases. We are, we have a secondary sign that hangs below our canopy and it's 12 inches by 8 inches, or by, I'm sorry, 18 inches by 12 inches. So I'll show that to you when we get to the elevations.
Yeah, and, and again, this is just, this is just guidance. None of this is actually the requirements of the zone. It's a park zone, so there's, there's no bulk requirements. We just use this as some guidance to guide our design.
Right. I'm going to start with the demolition plan and the roof plan. This is the outline of the building. It's CMU construction. It has a CMU bearing wall down the middle, supporting a simple roof structure. We are removing the front of the building. It's in disrepair and it allows us to pull the front of the building back to put a little bit of room on the sidewalk in front of the building. So is the, is the foundation plan shows, we're pulling the front back a little bit. This is the floor plan of the building. Coming in from the front of the building, we've kind of divided it into two halves, the right half and the left half. The right half in the front houses the garage bay. This is kind of the parking area. It's going to be used to store the ice cream truck. It's also going to be used as a place to load the ice cream truck. So it's kind of a parking and loading bay at the same time. It's sized according to what they need to, to have for, very specifically for their ice cream trucks. The door will be a 10-foot wide by 11-foot high door. Plans show a 10-foot high door, but kind of going through the use that they need, we're going to increase that to 11 feet. Behind the garage bay is a storage for dry goods. Then moving back behind that, there is a system of coolers and freezers. This is where they store the finished product as they prepare to load it back into the truck. On the left side of the building is where we have a little retail space. There's a little side, a little door right here. And as you come in, there is a little foyer, so people can come into the space and buy from the counter. There's going to be a little display there. There won't be any seating. It is really just a retail area. It is not any kind of an eating space. Retail space also has a display window, and on each side of the display window, there's going to be a little serving window. So there's serving at front in two places and then serving inside as well. There's a canopy that hangs out about three and a half feet in front of the display area and the serving windows to provide a little bit of cover to people that are at the windows. Behind the retail space, we need, we have a sprinkler room, it's a fully sprinkled building. And then we have a bathroom for the front staff. The client has said that they will offer the restroom to the public in what they call emergency situations. It's not going to be promoted. It will be a controlled use. Behind that is the office for the facility. And behind that is a break room and locker room for the employees and then another bathroom for the employees. Moving further back, there's a rather large wash area. It's where they clean and sterilize all of the equipment. And behind that will be a commercial kitchen that they're going to use for baking. And then the remaining space in the middle and the back is the actual ice cream production area where they have the blast chillers. It's basically a solid building all the way around on three sides. We're going to have a little bit of glass block on the right-hand side as that opens out onto the PSC and G facility. So we're just going to get a little bit of use light in there. It'll be, you won't be able to see through it. Okay, so, and then correspondingly on the roof here, you can see the, the canopy in the front. The roof will have a couple of skylights, one over the office, one over the break room, and then the rest will be two rooftop units for the actual building itself and then four condensers for the freezers and the chillers, or the coolers. This is the existing building in elevation. It's this is the facade. It's, like I said, it's in, it's kind of decrepit. It's in bad shape. It's got a bunch of rolling overhead security doors. It has windows that are, have been blocked in. So we're going to remove that facade in its entirety and build a new one about two feet back, in between one and two feet back. There's a chain link barbed wire fence around the top of the building in the back and on the left side, which we are going to remove. You can see that here. And there's a bunch of glass block through the wall, air conditioning holes that we are also going to remove and fill in. So this is the proposed facade. Here's the high bay door on the right and then the access door on the right as well. This is the, the existing roof line right in here, and so we're adding a parapet three feet around the three sides and then three and a half, actually, I'm sorry, five feet above the retail area. So we're differentiating the retail area from the kind of the facility area. This is the canopy across the front. Here it is sticking out. The sign will be above the canopy. It will be lit by three gooseneck fixtures. The canopy will also have lighting below it, downlighting, just lighting the sidewalk below the canopy. This is the door into the retail space. This is the display window and then a serving window here and a serving window here. There will be signs on each side, menu boards. They will be removable chalkboard type signs. We will be providing a waste facility that's pulled out every day and taken in every night specifically for the, the waste from people who are eating outside the building. So this is the right side of the building, which is opposite the, the power facility. These are the four windows which we're proposing, which are glass block. Everything else, it will be, right now, it's, it's concrete block, but we're going to provide a stucco cover over it to make it a nice, a new surface. This below the canopy is the, the hanging sign. It's two feet wide. It's 18 inches high. The bottom of the sign is eight feet off the ground. Eight feet off the sidewalk. This is a, just a color rendering of, of the same. It's going to be a brick facade of a black painted steel canopy. The wood trim around the display window and at the door will be stained. The color scheme comes from Torrico's downtown facility. I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with that, so we are matching that, that color scheme. We have a couple of bollards out front just to protect the entrance and then three gooseneck lights over the side. And then this is the right-hand side of the building, which will be stuccoed and have the four glass block windows.
So. Great. Thank you, Adam. If you could stop sharing your screen, we could bring our next witness up. I have Charles Height for you this evening.
Hello.
Charles, raise your right hand, please. Swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, Charles. And just state and spell your full name for the record.
Yes, I know there's a couple of board members. My name is Charles Height, last name self H E Y B T with the firm Gresner-Ravon.
Thank you.
And Charles, I guess for the record, your license is still in, in good standing?
Yes, licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. Work with the firm Gresner-Ravon. Been before this board on many occasions and glad to see everyone tonight.
Great.
Thank you, Charles. We accept your qualifications. Thank you.
All right, I'll dive right in, Steve, unless you have any upfront questions. Okay. We do have an interesting case here. I feel like this is, can be characterized as a good gut planning concept, because who doesn't love ice cream? But from a technical standpoint, we're presented with a little bit of a quirky situation. The property is located in the park and open space zone as per the zoning map. All of the properties in this zone along Garfield Avenue aren't open space. Their residential use is this old industrial building and as well as the one of the parcels for the PSC and G substation. There is a park located immediately south, basketball court. I believe it's the DeHear Park, which is city-owned property, but oddly enough, not located in the park and open space zone. Across the street, Garfield Avenue, just a little south is Berry Lane Park, which, which is a tremendous asset for the neighborhood. It's a very large multi-field, multi-use park. And a little bit of history about the neighborhood for, for those unfamiliar with the area. Berry Lane Park was at one point a very large industrial facility. Steel Tech is one of the also parcels in that area. Manufactured steel as well as there's two industrial uses just north of the Berry Lane Park, on Berry Lane actually, that are still industrial facilities. So it's, it's an interesting mix of uses. You have immediately across the street, the auto repair facility. Immediately south of this subject property, you have several residential homes, residential dwellings, structures. And then further west, up, up the ridge there, you have residential uses in the R1 district. So that's generally the makeup of, of the neighborhood. And really, the, the gut concept here from a planning perspective is that we are located near that basketball court, but more importantly, near Berry Lane Park, with, which is a very large active community node for this neighborhood and the, the general city as a whole. It's an induct, in terms of the, the positive criteria with respect to the youth variance. We did identify a couple of components here. So obviously, the only thing permitted in the park and open space zone are parks and open space. What we're proposing today is the continuance of primarily the industrial use, the production and creation of, of ice cream and packaging. But also, there's two other components that we wanted to identify for the benefit of the board, just understanding operations here. One is the direct sales of ice cream through the window. And then there's also a component of retail where there's the pickup of prepared ice cream and also ice cream cakes and different products, as, as my understanding. So given those two other elements, all, all obviously related, but each individually independent of, of, of as, as a principal use, we wanted to identify them collectively together as a youth variance, if you will. So with respect to the justification for youth variance, we were relying on a particular suitability. I would love to make the argument of inherently beneficial use, but I think the particular suitability case is appropriate here. We're adaptively reusing an existing structure, so that certainly is conserving resources from a planning standpoint. We are modifying the front facade to accommodate the new layout, modernizing it. New windows, new garage door, new parapet, new signage, new colors. So that certainly advances special reasons of, of desirable visual environment. And really, at the end of the day, this is a great location to further another purpose of land use law to accommodate unique uses in appropriate locations to benefit the general welfare. So I think that's purpose, purpose G of the municipal land as well. With respect to the negative criteria, a few of the aspects we did look at, and I'll just cite three from the statement of principle points that we prepared. One is whenever you convert a use that's zoned for public's open space, you want to be careful as to reducing the viable option for the city or anyone to create additional open space in the neighborhood. We did check the registered open space inventory list that the city maintains. It's not, this property is not located on that list. We did view the, the state DEP list of, of open space. It's not on any of the inventories there. And we also wanted to let the board know that the, the city does not own this property and we don't understand there's any plan to acquire it for, for a park. So we did walk through that. With respect to traffic, we aren't proposing any off-street parking. We really are viewing this as a neighborhood asset for local residents, people who are visiting the park to come and walk or ride their bicycles to. That's why we're proposing the, the on-street bicycle parking. We are also modifying the front facade to accommodate a little bit of a wider sidewalk, give a little bit more space in front of the building for people to queue while they pick up ice cream as part of the, the design and benefit here. So I think that was appropriate to, to address trips to and from the site. And we heard from the, the project architect with respect to the garage. There currently is a curb cut in garage door. We are relocating that. But the space, we do need technically a variance for the garage door height. The minimum for a loading space is 14 feet. The building's not 14 feet tall. So we're, we're expecting the physical limitations there and, and providing an appropriate garage door and, and that loading zone, which, which can also be used as, as a potential parking space as well. I, I believe those are the main points with respect to the negative criteria that we looked at. I don't find that this is any substantial impairment of the zone plan or zoning ordinance. We are very careful to try and understand if we're removing any potential property that's slated for open space and that's not the case here. And, and the proposed use, who doesn't love ice cream? It's a really contained use within industrials, in, in, within an industrial building. So we really don't see any substantial nuisance impacts with that. And then secondly, there's no substantial detriment to the general welfare. I, I, I think we covered most of the issues that could have impacts to the general welfare. And, and we didn't find anything that was substantial that we hadn't been able to address. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have or anything else.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Charles. That, that concludes our direct testimony. We are happy to discuss the projects further and answer any questions.
I've got a few questions.
Yep.
So I'm not sure who these would be best addressed to, but I think the, the architect. There was mentioned in the, my overarching. There was mentioned in the, my overarching concern is that this is a designated open space area. But I love ice cream. I love Tarrico's. I like this plan, but I have a few questions. It is located very close to two parks. You mentioned something about removing fences, but can you just elaborate a little bit about the site's security? Can kids jump over a fence and get in like a garbage compactor or some or some something like that? Or are kind of all of those resources kind of kept inside? I couldn't really tell from looking.
Yeah, so so Adam, maybe you could share your screen again. The the building is nearly 100% coverage. I believe the fence we were referring to is adjacent to the property near the the.
So the fence that I was discussing was along the back. Literally, it's on top of the building. And then along this side, all the way until it hits this adjacent house. So it's just a little L shape back here.
Okay.
I, I can't decide who that fence is protecting from who. It's kind of, you know.
Right.
Probably remnants from long ago. So that's really the only fence that we're removing. There's also chain link fence along the front of the the open space for the power substation, but that's remaining.
Okay. All right. And again, I'm just, I grew up in Jersey City. I used to sneak into all kinds of places. I, I just wanted you to kind of confirm, you know, site security and kids couldn't go there and get hurt. Not sure, and this question might seem like a bit much, but unfortunately, I know too much about making ice cream. Do you, do you know what kind of refrigerant you'll be using in the the chillers? Is it anhydrous ammonia or or some kind of HFC or something like that? Does anyone know?
I would be lying if I could answer, if I if I answered that question. I don't know.
I, I mean, so the the applicant is on this call. We could bring the applicant up, get the applicant sworn in and and see if we can answer that that specific question if.
And let, let, let me tell you why this is a minor concern. It's a, I understand it's small production. But if you are using actually one of the more environmentally friendly refrigerants like anhydrous pneumonia, if you did have a significant leak, that could have an impact on the neighborhood and the the workers. So you would need appropriate safety standards. It's, it, people think that ice cream, making ice cream is completely benign and it's it's, it's not when it's done on a large scale. This is a larger scale than than the shop on Erie Street.
Yeah, so. Lindsay, there, there is somebody in the attendees. The name is Tarrico Ice Cream. So if we could bring, if we could bring that attendee up, I'm not sure who, who it is, probably. Okay, and are, are you guys able to share your screen? So we get you sworn in? On mute.
There's also someone named Christine with their hand raised.
Yep.
Okay, I'll bring them over.
You might just be on two, two machines.
Hi, Christine. Would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? You're on mute. If you can unmute yourself and just state and spell your full name.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
All right, good evening. Yes, I say do. My name's Christine Barrios. My last name is spelled B as boy, E R R I O S.
Thank you.
And Christine, I know we went over a whole lot of stuff about operations prior to this hearing. The refrigerant used was not one of those items. So if you're able to provide some information for the for the commissioner.
I, I do know that what we use now with our current, you know, refrigeration, it's 404A. I don't know the actual components of that.
404A won't kill people. So that's, that's good. So that, that, that's actually fine. That, you know, you still have to have, you know, appropriate standards for kind of maintaining the the chillers and doing leak detection on them and and everything else. But all I am concerned about is that if we're going to grant the variance for putting something in a place that's been zoned for for parks, I want to make sure that piece of it's kid friendly too. So just one other little question. And I had wanted to drive by and and I didn't. But on this part of Garfield Avenue, can, is, is there on on the street parking? In front of the store?
That, that is a.
Yes, there is on-street parking in front of the building.
Okay, and so if I did want to pick up a cake at the window, I could like block the driveway for a second and pick up the cake. I, I was struggling with the idea of taking a bicycle to pick up an ice cream cake like I do frequently at Tarrico. So that's, that's fine. That's all I need to know. I'm good.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions?
Oh, Lindsay, do you want to go to the public? Where are you, Lindsay? There you are.
I'm here. Well, are we opening for for public comment?
Yes, why don't we do that before we get to staff?
Okay, I don't think I announced this yet, but if you have a question or a comment, you can click raise hand toward the bottom of your screen. Or if you're calling in, you could dial star nine and you'll have three minutes to provide a comment or question. But I don't see any hands raised.
Great. So why don't we have a motion to close the public? Is that good? Kate?
Yeah, yeah.
Great.
I'll, I'll make the motion to close the public. That's fine.
Okay, so I guess staff is Matt. That is, are you?
Yeah, so I'm just gonna bring up my screen real fast. Can you see my memo now?
No.
No.
Hey, that's weird what happened here. Now can you see my memo?
Yes.
All right, so I just want to bring up a couple of things. Let me zoom in real quick. So this area is delineated parks open space. And as Mr. Height pointed out, right to the south is Terry DeHare Park. In our research of this area, we also discovered an interesting ordinance that was worth mentioning. In 1999, and it's mentioned in the staff report, ordinance 99-019 acquired several other city lots to the south of Terry DeHare Park, which I'm motioning here about eight lots. Stretching to this, this, I believe it's a two-family home. They acquired these lots for passive and active recreational use. So shortly thereafter, the 2000, 2001 master plan was adopted. And I'm not, I have nothing to go off of, but it seems very odd that the city just acquired this lot. Did not map it in addition to this, this existing park. And instead mapped this area, including half of an existing substation for P S E N G. So just some additional history and background information on parks and open space on this block. Let me zoom out. I'm having troubles. Okay, there we go. So I don't think it was mentioned, but there is no parking requirement in the parks open space in addition to those no, no bulk, bulk standards. Off-street parking, however, and signs are are permitted accessory uses. And beyond some of the negative and cry, negative and positive criteria that their planning testimony covered. I just wanted to highlight some some objectives of the land use plan that this, this project may, may trigger. So one, encourage adaptive reuse of obsolete buildings. This building was in disrepair. And they they highlighted industrial facilities in in general. They also speak to emerging trends in retail development. Now, this isn't a big box, but we're seeing, you know, the inclusion of retail and and manufacturing in one place. I would say that's a more recent emerging trend, but this, this objective might be relevant here. Also, an economic development objective to maintain existing manufacturers and recruit new manufacturers to preserve Jersey City's industrial base. We know that this is an existing, although a much smaller facility down in downtown. But the retention of this could, would be met through the granting of of this use variance, this application. And just across the street, if it wasn't mentioned or highlighted, is, you know, predominant auto-related and industrial uses that are part of the, the industrial district of the Morse Canal redevelopment plan. So I leave my testimony with that and if you have any questions, I'm here.
Okay, does any commissioner have any questions for staff?
I'm sorry, man. I'm sorry, Matt. Real quick, you said you guys approved this project, right?
I, I think that they, they made a very good case. I think they, they've proven that they that there's no substantial judgment here, that there are many reasons to take the existing context into consideration. I don't believe there's any issue with staff recommending approval for this application. There are four conditions that our staff does recommend. If the applicant could put on the record when or not, they would agree to those.
The applicant agrees to the condition, conditions contained in the staff report.
Thank you.
That concludes your presentation, correct, Mr. Joseph?
That, that concludes our, our presentation.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve Z20-40, excuse me, zero, excuse me. Z20-4, that's zero four eight, for approval with staff conditions.
On a motion to prove with staff conditions, Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Shadid?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Patel?
Yes.
Vice Chair Donnelly?
Yes, and also thanks to Matt Ward for doing kind of the background research about why we think the area ended up being zoned that way. I think that was very helpful and it's important to put that context on, on the record. I love this project and I love that people will be able to go for a walk in the summer and get ice cream. It's great and go to the park.
And Chairman Jacobs?
Matt, I, I did miss a few minutes of of the presentation. So I mean, I'm, I'm happy to vote or not vote.
Okay, will we have seven without, we have six without you, so.
Okay, I'll, I'll abstain. I, I, but I would have voted in favor of it.
Right.
I will take that and I'll take the compliment too. So we have six in favor and one abstention. Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Good luck with the project.
Thank you so much.
Okay. So let's proceed with case Z20-078. The address is 84 Ferry Street?
Nick's going to be doing this one? I will not be presenting this one tonight.
Okay.
So he's, I see him in the, he's raising his hand in the, in the attendees.
Bridget, before we start, let's put on the record that we've reviewed the affidavit and proof of service and notice of publication. So for this application, we're going to mark that as A1.
Okay, this will be A1 for this application.
How are you, Mr. Charamy?
Very good. Thank you. Thank you.
And you'll agree to have your witnesses sworn in remotely?
Yes, agreed.
Great, thank you.
All right. Thanks so much and thanks for having this special meeting this evening. We appreciate it. So Nicholas Tremi appearing for the applicant at 84 Ferry Street, the applicant's Six Borough Development LLC. Hopefully, this particular project is pretty straightforward. Just to give the board a little bit of context here, property is located on Ferry Street, near the intersection with Abbott Street. The property itself is 25 by 98 feet, sits in the R1 zone, so it's.
I'm be surprised. It's coming.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mitchell. Did you say something? Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Charamy.
Okay, fair enough. So currently on the lot, which is an undersized lot slightly, is an existing three family house. So the applicant this evening is looking to expand that particular use into the rear of the building. So it is an expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use, so the variance. But it, it's a pretty straightforward application in general. This evening, we've got two witnesses for you. We've got Raul and Raul Cabato is our architect and Samuel Bellamy is our planner. So I think without further ado, we'll bring up Raul to take us through the plan.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And could you state and spell your full name for the record?
Sure, Raul Cabato, R A U L C A B A T O.
Thanks, Raul.
Thank you.
Like the, or to confirm Raul's? Yeah, we accept, we accept Raul's qualifications. He's been on the board many times. Thank you.
So the, my license is still current. Okay, if I could share my screen. Can everybody see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. So the, the project is located in an R1 zoning district. We are proposing the enlargement of an existing three-story, three-dwelling unit structure, which is a non-conforming use in an R1 zoning district. We are requesting a variance to allow for the expansion of the non-conforming use. The existing structure has a footprint of 875.6 square feet. The proposed footprint is an additional 549.8 square feet. The existing structure, let me just enlarge this a bit here. The existing structure right here abuts the neighboring building to the east and is set back three feet, one inch from the neighbor's property to the west. This westerly neighbor is currently set back two feet from the property line. The proposed addition shall be three stories. I'm sorry. Let me, let me go back to the building. The existing structure is set back about 8.3 feet from the front property line and is currently shy of 38 feet in length. The proposed addition shall be a little over 25 feet in length and shall maintain the width of the existing structure. The addition shall also be built to the east side property line and set back three foot, one inch from the west side property line. We are proposing a rear yard of about 26 feet, nine inches. In adding the depth of the. In adding the depth of the front yard and the depth of the rear yard, the total is greater than thirty-five feet and is therefore in compliance with the R one requirement. The proposed addition shall be three stories and shall match the floor to ceiling heights of the existing structure. The overall height of the addition shall be twenty-six feet, eight inches, once again, matching the existing structure. Please note that the existing structure is under thirty feet in height because the lowest level is a basement. With the addition, the proposed structure shall have an overall length of about sixty-three point five feet, sixty-two feet, five inches and a width of twenty, twenty-one feet, eleven inches. Landscaping is proposed. In the front and in the rear of the building. Lands and it it is about it is more than sixty percent landscaped at the front yard. Going to the apartments. In our drawings, we have, just for comparison, you could see the existing building and the proposed building up top. All the apartments shall be similar in layout, consisting of three bedrooms and two bathrooms. Each apartment shall have their own laundry appliances. Also proposed are balconies. Our balconies. In four feet in depth for the second and third floor units. Which will access shall be accessed from the master bedrooms. At the basement level. The master bedroom has direct access to the outdoor garden area. On average, each apartment shall be one thousand two hundred twenty square feet in area. There is an existing roof deck. The deck is currently set back about four feet, nine inches from the face of the building. The deck is currently five hundred eighty-four point seven seven square feet and shall remain that way. To the rear of the roof of the roof, we propose installing the condensing units for the apartments below. We. We propose to clad the front facade with brick from the second to the third floors. The existing brick shall remain at the base of the building. We're also proposing a curved glass wall in the front. Samples of all the finishes shall be found on sheet A. A four hundred. Also, the rear and the side elevations will be clad with fiber cement siding. Once again, the sample being on sheet A four hundred. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you, Raul.
Thank you.
At this point, we'll bring up Sam. What's the screen? There we go. Our planner this evening is Samuel Bellamy.
Had to find you first. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And just state and spell your name for the record.
Of course, it's Samuel Bellamy, last name B E L L A M Y with the firm Justin and Robin.
Thank you.
And Sam, we we accept your qualifications.
And my license is current and still in good standing.
Thank you.
So getting right into my testimony, I I stated, we are requesting a D two variance for the expansion of the non-conforming. Existing non-conforming three-unit building here. I did make a site visit as part of my preparation for the testimony tonight. The block is generally characterized with one and two family home. There's also a number of smaller multifamily buildings, three and four units. Funding on the Central Avenue on the west end of the block is a church and there's also a school there. This size, the lot is slightly smaller than the required. That's it's a little shallower and ninety-eight feet. As Mr. Cabato mentioned, we are compliant, the existing building is compliant with all setback and coverage requirements. As a zero-foot east side yard setback with an attached building next to it. Then the west side yard is a is a three-foot setback. We do have an existing eight-foot front yard setback, which matches the existing building. Adjacent to the east. We're proposing to maintain those side yard setbacks, maintain the front yard setback and really just extend. The the rear of the building back into the property. We will be providing with the with the addition, we will be providing a twenty-seven foot. Rear yard setback. When added to that eight-foot front yard setback does meet the requirement for both the minimum rear yard and combined front and rear yard. Requirements. Again, we are maintaining that the three-unit, three-story building. Maintaining those existing floor to ceiling heights and the overall thirty-foot building height, which is permitted in the R one district. So so with this expansion, really, the only change not in the number of units, but in the unit sizes and number of bedrooms. So that they will be three-bedroom units with this expansion. Do not think that there's any substantial detriment to the general welfare. We are going to be complying with all bulk requirements, setbacks and coverage. So really, in regards to light and air and open space, there is no additional impact. Furthermore, to the to the rear of the property, the lot is is slightly deeper than the standard R one district lot at a hundred ten feet. So there is additional separation between the proposed expansion to the building and the and the building to the rear, allowing for light and air. In addition, we are adding front yard landscaping and a new street tree consistent with the forestry standards. Front yard landscaping will further provide for extra security and privacy for that for that basement unit in the in this building. In regards to the zone planner zoning ordinance, you know, this is an existing three-unit building. We are maintaining that. And there's there's that's consistent with the residential nature of of the area. We are providing, consistent with the master plan, the three-bedroom units, which which isn't always found in in these projects. So they are, that's an additional amenity to the housing stock in Jersey City. And and further, I I think that. Going back. So I I do think that the the facade improvements will also add to the streetscape. Along with the the front yard landscaping. And I don't believe that the side improvements will, you know. Disturb the architectural character of the streetscape. There is a mix of mix of architectural styles. So we are consistent with that. Getting into the purpose of the of the municipal land use law, I do believe we promote purpose A, which is the appropriate use and development. Again, we are maintaining that three-unit use and also maintaining the density, which has existed on this property. And that's consistent with purposes A and E. And then with the streetscape improvements, we are further advancing purpose I of the municipal land use law. So with that, I would happy to answer any questions, but that concludes my testimony.
Thank you, Sam. That that concludes our direct testimony. If there are any questions, we happy to entertain them.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the board at this time?
I have, I just have a minor comment. When I was looking at the the plan that that's linked. It looks like the property that shaded isn't on Ferry Street. It's on Boram. Avenue, so if you could just fix that. For the. Unless I was looking at a different version. Up where you had the radius map. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
See what I mean?
Yeah, so the applicant can confirm that that can the the radius map can be updated.
Yeah.
Parcel.
Yeah, so 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 just include that as a super minor condition that.
Fine.
They just need to shade a different box.
No problem.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments from the board at this time? Okay, any questions or comments from the public? Okay, Lindsay, does it look like anyone's raised their hands?
Don't see any hands raised.
Okay, so.
Oh, actually, I do see a hand raised.
Okay.
Chairman, would you like me to watch the time?
Sure, sure. So Commissioner Shadid will be the the timekeeper. Everyone from the public has three minutes. Ahmed, do you want to give them and like let them know when they have one minute left, thirty seconds left?
Okay, will do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Someone named Susan had their hand raised, so I just you're allowed to unmute yourself. I'm here at Echo. Please state and spell your full name and provide your address for the record, please.
Susan, you're muted.
Can you? I apologize. Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can. Yes.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Susan Bodras. I'm a resident of Jersey City.
And Ms. Bodras, could you spell your last name?
B as in boy, O T as in Tom, R O S, as in Sam.
Okay, and do you verify that you are who you just stated you are and you will agree that your testimony tonight will be as if it was under oath?
Yes.
Okay, and your address, ma'am?
Three, three, three Grand Street, apartment six oh eight, Jersey City, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Okay, Susan, do you want to give your your thoughts?
Yes, I think this is a beautiful project. I looked into it. I drove in by the the street. I think it would look beautiful and and draw in, you know, a good crowd of people to buy this this property. It would just look more appealing to the street. So I do love this project. I think it's going to look really nice for Jersey City.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else, Lindsay?
Yes, wait one second. Okay, someone named Maria, their hand raised. Maria, I'm unmuting you. Please state and spell your full name and provide your address for the record, please.
Hi, Maria Cosden, six fourteen Palisade Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey. And K O S.
And Ms. Cosden, do you verify that you are who you just stated you are and you will agree that your testimony tonight will be as if it was under oath?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I I agree with Susan. I really like the project. I only live a few blocks away. And I think it'll add some nice street curb appeal to the community. And I like that they're all three-bedroom, two bathrooms. You don't see a lot right now of inventory for that. And I still, I think it's a great project. I love the front facade of the building and that's it. Just want to say I agree with the project and think it should move forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lindsay, anyone else?
Nope.
Okay, then we'll close the public portion of the application. Any staff comments?
Just minor. The the expansion of the non-conforming use is. Very minimal and does not particularly affect the R one zoning. And basically echoing some of the things Sam was talking about. The the addition of the the expansion in the rear, you know, adds more the ability to have the three-bedroom units. Which I think is a good thing for the neighborhood. Some of the facade changes give the building a fresh look. And overall, I like the project and staff recommends.
Thanks, Tim. Anyone at this time from the board have any questions to staff or again to the applicant? Does anyone want to make a motion on this application?
Make a motion to approve Z two zero dash zero seven eight. With staff conditions. Second.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Shadid?
Yes.
Commissioner Patel?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Donnelly?
Yes.
And Chairman Jacobs?
Yes.
All in favor, motion passes to staff.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
All the best, yeah.
So we're going to proceed with case Z nineteen dash one zero three. The address is seven nine five Secaucus Road.
Okay, am I unmute? Am I mute or?
Okay, great.
So Mr. O'Connell, before you start, we've looked at your affidavit and proof of service, your notice of publication. And Bridget's going to mark that A one for this application.
Okay, that would be A one.
And also, Mr. O'Connell, you'll agree to have your witnesses sworn in remotely, correct? Great.
Well, before I start, I want to say join Nick and say thanks so much for having this special meeting tonight. It's very much appreciated. And I'd like to add, I know a couple of mission, you lost a couple of commissioners, like to thank them. I got to know them over the years and I thank them for their service and also for the present commissioners because you are volunteers. So thanks so much. I have two witnesses tonight. Actually, my client purchased this property back in twenty twelve. And when she purchased it, even though it's a legal two-family home, it had a third unit in the in the building. So our our process tonight is to legalize that third unit. I have two witnesses, Alan Feld is our architect and Carolyn Westell, our planner. So I'd ask Alan to raise his hand and share a screen to show the board what we are planning for the property.
Okay, and Alan, do you, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? And you need to unmute yourself.
How's that? Better?
Yes.
Yes, do you? I just need you to say, yes, you do.
Yes, I do. Again.
Okay, and Alan, your license is current and you're licensed architect in New Jersey, correct?
State of New Jersey, that's correct. Yes. I appeared before this board many times.
Yes, we accept your qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you. I have to try to share my screen. See if this works. Is that working?
Yeah, I see it.
All right. So as Jean mentioned, this is. An existing three-story building. There are three existing units in the building. There's one unit on each floor. Let me go to the floor plan actually first. So we get a sense of what's going on here. On the first floor, in the front, there's a garage. And then through the garage and behind the garage is one apartment. That's a two-bedroom, one-bath apartment that was existing. On the second floor. Is an existing apartment. It's a three-bedroom. Two-bath apartment. And on the third floor is a third apartment with, again, the similar to the second floor, it's a three-bedroom, two-bath apartment. And that's the roof. So again, we're not proposing any work with inside the building. These are all existing conditions. What we are doing. Is adding additional landscaping, right? Presently, the front is basically all pavement. And what we are doing is providing. new landscaping, new planters in the front yard alongside the, the garage entrance and the, and the staircase, existing staircase. And then we're gonna repave the sidewalk and plant a new tree in front of the house. So basically, that's the scope of the work, and that's the existing conditions.
And I have no further questions for this witness.
Thank you.
Okay, then Alan, can we, can you unshare your screen and we'll call Carolyn Wurstel?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Carolyn, raise your right hand, be sworn. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state and spell your full name for the record.
Great, Carolyn Wurstel, W O R S T E L L.
Thank you.
And Carolyn, you've testified before the board before, is that correct?
I have.
And your license is current?
It is.
Yes, we accept your qualifications, thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good evening, everyone, thank you. So as was mentioned, we're here seeking a D1 use variance to permit, to legalize that existing third unit, which is on that ground floor. In terms of the positive criteria here, we're looking at those special conditions. Again, we're not proposing any improvements to this existing structure, however, this site really is appropriate for this type of use, for a three-family use. It's a larger lot than typical, it's about 2,698 square feet, so it's slightly larger than your typical lot in the R1 district. And the density proposed here, the three units, is consistent with similar structures in the area. There are actually two adjacent dwellings, 797 and 799 Secaucus, so directly to the west of us, that are three-family dwellings, as well as there are additional three-family dwellings at 831 Secaucus Road, 819, and several others in, in the neighborhood and along the street. In addition, directly adjacent to us is a large non-residential structure, it's about two and a half story brick structure, that's directly adjacent to us on the other side. So there's a little bit of a mixture of uses here, but the, the density that we're proposing is consistent with the character of the street. Historically, this, this project, property did exist as a three-family and, and has functioned that way, although illegally. And in terms of the layout, you know, each unit is self-contained on an individual floor, and that first floor unit does have its own separate access via a side entrance along the side of the building, as well as through that garage. So you really do have some well-laid out units, two bedrooms and the three bedrooms, so they're, you know, sufficiently sized. In terms of, there are a couple of non-conforming bulk items on this, this lot, regarding the side yard and the rear yard, and the fact that the garage itself is a bit undersized. These are existing non-conforming conditions, they will not change with this application. The, the thing that really is changing here is what's going on in front of the building, what is seen from the street. There's going to be quite a bit of more additional landscaping proposed to that front yard, we're expanding the, the area that's sort of in the front of the stairs, and there's, you know, additional landscaping to the side of the driveway, as well as on either side of the stairs, so we are adding enough landscaping here in this front yard now that we are exceeding that minimum 30% of the front yard landscaping that is required. As well as with doing this, we're actually making sure we, we're not going to need a lot coverage variance, I, I believe we asked for one originally, but with this additional landscaping being proposed in this front yard, we are now below that 85% coverage, so, so that's now, we're removing that non-conformity of this lot. This project really does promote the various purposes of the municipal land use law. It's, you know, the, the three-family unit here really is an appropriate use and development of, of the site, and is consistent with the character of the neighborhood, which is purpose A. It, you know, in accordance with purpose E, it really promotes unappropriate population density, you know, and consistent with other three families, multifamily dwelling units on the street. And additionally, all this additional work at the front really will promote a desirable visual environment on the street in advancing purpose I. Looking at those negative criteria, the project won't result in a substantial detriment to the public good. The building itself is not changing, there's no changes to the building, but we're really improving that streetscape, we're improving the, the visible qualities of the building, you know, there's going to be the new streets, I'm sorry, new sidewalks, the curb cut will be replaced and made sure it's going to be that 10 feet required, new landscaping, as well as the new street tree. Over, the granting of variances will not result in a substantial detriment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan. The building has functioned as a, a three-family and is consistent with adjacent dwellings. And it does advance several land use objectives of the city's current master plan, promoting and preserving residential neighborhoods from intrusion by non-residential uses, and providing housing densities appropriate to the character of the existing neighborhood. So as such, both positive and negative criteria have been met to support the granting of this use variance and any ancillary bulk variances.
Thank you very much, Carolyn, that concludes our testimony.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions at this time, anyone, any commissioners having any questions at this time for either expert? Anyone from the public have any questions or comments?
I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, then let's close the public portion of the application. Any staff comments?
Yes, sorry, so I did prepare a staff report dated January 22nd, 2021. So just to kind of summarize what was in that report, the applicant is seeking to legalize their existing non-conforming third dwelling unit, thus requiring the D1 use variance for a three-family home in the R1. The site also includes a non-conforming one-car garage and does not currently include front yard landscaping, as you heard. The oversized front yard also encourages front yard parking, which is not permitted in any zone in the city. I did take a look at the tax records to see when this building was constructed, to see if the front yard parking was potentially grandfathered in. I did find out that this was built in 2003, therefore, front yard parking is not grandfathered in since the current land development ordinance was written in 2001, which at that time included the provision that front yard parking was not permitted anywhere in the city. So that's a non-conforming condition there. So in these instances, when you have a, like an illegal unit, where they request to legalize the existing non-conforming condition, we don't hold that condition against the applicant, however, we do look for site improvements and other criteria to, to justify the use variance. Since it's existing, no additional bulk is proposed, and there, as you heard, there are a number of multifamily homes in the surrounding area, including the two lots immediately next door, those both have, those are both three-family homes. Therefore, the, the three, the proposed three-family home wouldn't be out of character for this area. And then in terms of improvements to the site, so the, the plans have been changed since they were first submitted and since they were first scheduled, so front yard landscaping has been added since. But just to go through what I put in my staff report, we did recommend that conforming front yard landscaping is added to the site and that masonry or fencing is added around the landscaping to ensure compliance and to ensure that cars aren't parked in the front yard. There is not much we can do, really, if a car sits right outside of the garage door, but this design would prevent multiple cars from being parked in the front yard, plus would allow for that conforming front yard landscaping and reduction in overall lot coverage. Like I said, since my report was issued, the plans have been revised to include that additional landscaping. So staff recommends approval with the conditions in my report, which includes that those additional details are added regarding masonry or fencing around the new landscaping, and that the zoning table should also be revised just to include that change to the front yard landscaping. So again, staff recommends approval, and I would be happy to answer any questions, if anyone has any.
Thanks, Lindsey, does anyone?
So are, are they, are they removing the, the curb cut?
No, because there's a garage existing, there's a one-car garage onsite, so that's kind of where the, the issue is there. And when I said it's a non-conforming garage, it is undersized, but in the R1, it states that if there's going to be first level parking, it's a minimum of two spaces, so it's the dimensions, but also the fact that there's one car, and it's written to prevent that non-conforming condition to add a, because where the third unit is, is right behind that garage, so that extra space is what allowed them to, to put that in there.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Thanks, Lindsey.
Yeah.
Anyone else have any other questions, comments? Any other questions, sorry? Anthony?
I got a motion, I'm trying to match rich, rich energy. I want to put forth a motion to approve Z19-103 pending staff approval.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Patel?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Shadid?
Yes.
Vice Chair Donnelly?
Yes.
And Chairman Jacobs?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, all in favor with conditions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, let's proceed with case, unless, Bridget, do you want to take a break?
Um, where's Jean? Jean, you think this is going to be a long one, or?
I don't think so, we had a community meeting, there was no opposition.
All right, Josh, why don't we go ahead with this one, and then we'll take a break and then Jean can go home.
Okay.
Maybe he is home, I don't know.
I am. Okay.
Jean, I'm throwing you a bone here.
We'll proceed with case Z20-025, the address is 319-321 Old Bergen Road.
Again, Mr. O'Connell, we have your affidavit and proof of service, you notice a publication, Bridget will mark that as A1.
Okay, that would be A1 for this application.
And again, Mr. O'Connell, you'll agree to have your witnesses sworn in remotely, correct?
I do, I do, Mr. Bulpackler.
Great, thanks.
Thanks. All right, well, this, this application is a piece of property in Jersey City that while in an R1 zone is located in, we're probably all familiar with this, this intersection of the Kennedy Boulevard, Old Bergen Road and McAdoo Avenue. It's the old Boulevard Hardware Commercial Spaces on the corner, across the street from that is the Bubbles Wandermat, and then right across the street from our project is a five-story multifamily building. So our, our lot is oversized, it's 4,747 square feet. Working with staff, we have now a mixed units in the building, so it's going to be 10-unit building, two studios, four two-bedrooms and four one-bedrooms. And along with councilperson Denise Ridley, we set up a community meeting, which we had back in October of last year. And I sent out all the notices, we set up the virtual Zoom meeting, we had four people speak at the meeting in favor of the project, nobody in opposition to it. And tonight I have two witnesses, I have Mukti Bajaj, our architect, and Sam Bellamy, our principal planner. So Mukti, if you can share your screen, we'll start with you.
And Mukti, Mrs. Bajaj, could you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And state and spell your full name, please.
Mukti Bajaj, M U K T I, the last name is Bajaj, B A J A J.
Thank you.
And Mukti, you are a licensed architect, the state of New Jersey, your license is current?
Yes, that's correct.
And you've testified before, before the zoning board in Jersey City?
Yes, I have.
Yes, we, we accept Mukti's qualifications, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. All right, Mukti, if you could share your screen?
Yeah.
Take it over.
Hello, everyone. So this is 319-321 Old Bergen Road, the block is 27005, and the, there are two lots, 5.01 and 5.02. As Eugene mentioned, this is a block which is very close to Kennedy Boulevard and McAdoo Avenue. So it's, it's just 200 feet from Kennedy Boulevard and right at the intersection of McAdoo. So the current lot is parking and a single-family house, it has 100% coverage. And this one is an R1 zone, the lot area is 4,757 square feet. The lot width is, it's an oversized lot, the lot width is 50. And it is, it's a triangular, slight angle at the back, and the lot minimum width or depth is 86 feet. So what we are proposing here is 10-unit building with eight parking spaces. There are few variances requested to comply with the parking and requirement. Existing lot coverage is 100%, and even the proposed is 100%, because the first floor has a parking on the, on the, on the whole lot. The building coverage is 100% because of the parking on the first floor. So out of this 10 units, two are two-bedroom, two-bath, two are studios, and we have remaining six are one-bedroom, one-bath. The grass area of the entire building is 14,000, 14,042 square feet, but of which the residential is only 9,295 square feet. So this is start point of the site plan. This is a survey which shows the existing single-family two-story structure with the parking, which covers up the entire lot here. So as I mentioned, this is a slight angle in the, the lot, the back, this is 86 feet here, and this is 103 feet or 104 feet on the left with the south. This is a demolition site plan, this simply just shows the structure to be demolished. So this is a proposed site plan where even though we are proposing four-story structure, one story is parking, but on the upper level, we have, you know, 14 feet set back from, for the backyard. And the front of the building is still appears to be three-story building, because the fourth floor is set back like 23 feet from the front of the building. Also, you're proposing a tree and garage entrance on the driveway, we have you know, colored concrete paving over there to differentiate from the sidewalk or the pedestals. This is the first floor plan, so the main entrance is towards the north of this lot, that's a main lobby with the elevator and one staircase, and the garage.
The main lobby with the what?
With the elevator and one staircase. And then the garage entrance with the eight parking spaces, five bike parking and the recycle or garbage room in the garage. There's a small cellar which just has utilities, like sprinkler room and gas meters. This is a second floor plan, so it has the front are two one-bedroom, one-bath units, the average square feet is 6,050 square feet. And at the back, we have one-two-bedroom, two-bath, which is And at the back, we have one two bedroom, two bath, which is uh nine hundred and seventy eight square feet and a studio, which is four hundred and twenty eight square feet. And the second floor units will have private terrace.
Will have what?
Private terrace. Uh, and yeah. And the third floor, the layout is pretty much the same. So the third floor, we have again, the front is two, one bedroom, one bath, uh, six hundred and seven hundred square feet. The back is two bedroom, two bath with nine hundred and seventy eight square feet and a studio. So as I mentioned before, the fourth floor just has two units, one bedroom, one bath. And in the front, it is set back almost by twenty seven feet and we have a rooftop deck about this on the front of the building. Like in the front portion of the building. Uh, this is a roof plan which just has condensers. There's no other roof coating proposed. So this is the proposed facade where we have used a traditional look for the facade and combined with some industrial and modern element on the first level. So the brick uses a red brown brick for the entire facade. Uh, the first main entrance, we have highlighted with the odd, there's an accent panel system for the main entrance. And this upper floor basically shows the fourth floor, which is set back like almost twenty five feet. Um, so I think so this building doesn't have any side yards like so there's a zero side yards. So that's the reason this facades or the side yard facade or side yard elevations won't have any windows. It just finished with vinyl siding and a stucco on the first level. Um, this is a rear elevation, the best elevation where the first floor is a garage, finish with stucco. And and the upper floors, it's just the vinyl siding. So this last sheet is basically the sideline diagram. So it basically just shows that the fourth floor and the bulkhead are not basically visible from the opposite side of the street. So basically in the front, when you look, it looks like a three story building. And I think that concludes my testimony. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mukti.
And we'll hold all questions to the end.
Okay, then if you could stop sharing your screen and then we'll get Sam Bellamy sworn in.
Remind Mr. Bellamy, he remains under oath.
Yes.
And Sam, we continue to accept your qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
So I'll get right into my my testimony. We are requesting a couple of variances with this proposed project. Versus a use variance for the multifamily use. We're also requesting a height variance, a D six height variance for four stories, approximately forty three feet. And there are a number of associated bulk variances we're asking for, and those are related to um the multifamily use and subsumed within that use variance as they're they're applicable to one and two families, but we're proposing a multifamily building. Um, as Mr. O'Connell had mentioned in his um o opening, um, this this project is particularly well suited for the proposed multifamily use. Does come at that intersection of JFK, Old Bergen and McAdoo Avenue. Um, it is also twice the size of the typical and required R1 district lot, which is required twenty five hundred, where approximately um over forty seven hundred square feet. Um, in addition, we did look at surrounding densities in the area. Um, we found what we are proposing is consistent with other multifamily buildings in terms of density and number of units. Um, this area is owned R1, so it is predominantly one and two family, but there are multifamily buildings scattered throughout. In terms of the height variance, when it's when accompanied with a use variance, it's tested against a more relaxed standard, um, showing that the property can accommodate any detriment with with the increase in building height. Um, so as our architect pointed out, the the fourth story is set back over twenty feet from the front front facade. Um, it will not be visible from the streetscape when looking down Old Bergen. Um, in addition, the the change in facade material to that lighter facade really from visual impact will reduce any further impact that the additional story would have. Um, in the rear, we do above the ground floor, we are proposing it's a minimum fourteen foot setback and then it extends um greater as as a lot. Um, it's an irregular lot on a diagonal. So as you go get into the block, we will be providing a greater rear yard setback. And that really provides for that, what we call the donut hole, creating more light air and open space between the properties adjacent to it. Um, furthermore, to the rear, our property are existing commercial automotive uses. Um, so there's really no usable open space existing today. Um, getting into some of the municipal land use law, I do believe this is an appropriate use and development of the of the property that's consistent with purpose A. Um, we also are proposing a stormwater detention system in the garage. Um, and that will that will manage stormwater runoff consistent with purpose B. And with the the setback, the step backs of the upper stories from the rear yard and also that fourth story step back from the front of the building, we are providing for light air and open space consistent with purpose C. Um, getting into the density, um which which is consistent with the surrounding, um, this project will continue to promote an appropriate density for this oversized lot. Um, and that's consistent with purpose I. Um, this this project is also consistent with the Jersey City Master Plan, um, providing unique, attractive and high quality residential areas. I believe this um this will is an appropriate infill development, um, replacing the existing building and really that's the property's hundred percent lot coverage, a large surface parking area. Um, so it's an appropriate infill development that will improve the streetscape. Um, and also the mix of units will provide for a range of housing options in Jersey City. I'm getting into the negative criteria. Again, this is a this is an appropriate infill development. Um, the proposed use is consistent with the residential character of the area and will be um can um consistent with all current building codes. Um, the project will likewise not have any substantial detriment to the purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance, um, which is to accommodate existing housing and encourage compatible infill development. Um, and with that, the ground floor coverage requirements is really to allow for the um a full ground floor parking layout. Um, and and that's with the coverage, hundred percent lot coverage. So we are proposing an efficient parking layout. Um, basically reusing the the curb cut that currently exists on Old Bergen Avenue. Um, I should also mention that there is no current parking permitted on that side of Old Bergen. Um, so we aren't taking away from any on-street parking spaces. And the eight spaces will will um further, you know, promote the population density that that we're proposing here. Um, so with that, I think I conclude my testimony. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Sam.
Thanks, Sam. Does anyone have any questions at this time for any of the experts?
Um, I I just, sorry, I've got a quick question for for Sam. Um, it has mostly to to do with the subsum variances for the the lack of setbacks. There's there's one side setback that's going to be no setback, zero. And then also the there's no rear yard set setback. You had and you had made reference to, I'm assuming the the rear yard is what abuts the auto dealership or the auto repair place. Is that correct?
Yep. Yeah, there's a there's an existing one story masonry building that's it's almost is um zero percent setback on that rear lot line there.
Okay, and and what about the neighbor on the on the side yard who's not getting any air or space?
Yeah, so those um existing building, there's a two story building. Um, I believe that's the north of us. That building is currently set back approximately six, six and a half feet. Um, the existing building today is also built on that same side lot line. Um, on the other side lot line, the existing building there has a three foot, one inch setback. Um, so those properties are
Okay.
Setback appropriately. So there's no impacts to any windows or anything on the lot line.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Kate. Anyone else have any questions for uh the applicant's experts at this time? Okay, any um anyone from the public have any questions or or comments?
I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, then we'll close the public portion. Are there any um just, yeah, I mean, I'm sure there's staff comments. Does staff have any comments?
Yeah, I'll keep it brief. I did prepare a staff report dated January twenty second, twenty twenty one. So a really quick summary, the applicant is proposing a four story multifamily building in the R1 zone, hence the request for a D one variance uh for use and then the D six variance for heights for the additional story. Uh, they're proposing eight ground floor parking spaces. And then there's a fourteen foot step back above the parking level in the rear yard. And then a twenty three foot step back above the third floor. So while this is considered a four story building, the top floor is set back considerably from the front building line to mitigate any potential impacts from increased height. So for the use. Sorry, what's?
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, am I echoing? I think I heard myself echoing. But.
Like, we can hear.
Okay, so for the use, uh, the proposed density is ninety three units an acre where thirty five units per acre is permitted in the R1. And, you know, as was they were going over in their testimony, the applicant's experts and in their statement of principal points, there are multi-family buildings and other uses in the immediate area. This is also an oversized lots. The unit sizes are appropriate and as I was going over before, the the design is cognizant of the low rise character of the area and provides the step backs in the rear yard above the the first floor and the rear yard and on the fourth floor. So while not and also not while not required due to the lot size, it doesn't trigger the need for stormwater management. The applicant is also proposing a below grade detention system to mitigate stormwater runoff. So with that being said, staff recommends approval with the conditions in my staff report. And if anyone has any questions, be happy to answer them.
Lindsay, I do have a question. Um, I mean, I I think that a lot of what you're saying and the what the the applicant's expert said, I I think makes a lot of sense. Um, actually, where where I don't, you know, and this is a this is an example of one where I I would ask, you know, should should we rezone this area? Maybe it shouldn't be R1. Um, you know, if we're saying and and I think you could just quickly look at what's in the neighborhood right now in the immediate vicinity, probably probably not R1 um would be most appropriate. Um, so, you know, this is probably one that that we probably didn't need to hear. Uh, was was kind of my view. If we're saying that that's something that's three times the allowable density, ten units in a in an R1, um, again, I would just, and I've said it before, but um maybe we need to reevaluate the the city master plan. And this is a good example of that.
Great, I appreciate that comment. We we are, as you all know, we are rewriting the land use element and one of the things that our consultant team and city staff we are using is looking at um variances that have been approved and looking at trends. So looking at what there where there are clusters of use and height variances. So um, all of these cases are, you know, what we look to to make future zoning changes, among other things. But zoning board approvals are our main resource for those recommend recommended changes.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions or comments? Does Anthony or anyone else want to make a motion?
I make a motion. I make a motion to approve Z twenty dash zero two five uh with staff approval, I mean, staff uh recommendation.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Patel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Shadid?
Yes.
Vice Chair Donnelly?
Yes.
And Chairman Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, motion carries all in favor with conditions.
Thank you.
Good luck on the project.
Just we did get public comments on that, right?
He did open it.
He opened it.
Okay, good. Sorry.
No, that's that's fair.
Bridget, do you want to take a five minute break or do you want to see if uh?
That sounds good. Five minutes sounds good.
Great, so we're going to take a five minute break. Thanks, everyone. See you at eight thirty five.
You.
And what's the problem?
I had two days with a cat.
Oh.
Barb, could you get me on?
Barb, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm having uh someone come in and try to get my picture.
Okay, just so you know, we can hear you, that's all. Go over here. Click on that. Start video.
Okay.
Now we can see you.
No, what could I say?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Don't worry, we all have tech jobs after uh COVID is over, right?
Yes.
That. You want me to start?
Well, well, let's just see, do we have everybody back?
No, I'm sorry, I see we're missing Ms. Donnelly and Mr. Shaheed.
I don't know if Anthony's back.
Yeah.
No, I don't see Anthony.
Okay. So, Mr. Weinberg, it's okay. I think we should, you know, wait two more minutes.
Fine.
I'm back.
Great.
I just got back to him, man.
Okay, so.
We all here.
I think we're all here.
Okay. Want me to start?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Robert Weinberg and I represent the applicant Nicola Flora. One is I'd like to thank the board for having this special meeting. Someone who's gotten bumped many times, it's really nice to be, though we're gonna get heard.
Well, Mr. Weinberg, let's start by saying that we have reviewed your notices, your affidavit and proof of service, your notice of publication. And Bridget will mark that as A one for this application.
Thank you.
We'll mark it as A one for this application.
And also, Mr. Weinberg, you agree to have your witnesses sworn in remotely.
Yes, I do.
Okay, great. So I I don't know if we call this case, Mr. Chairman, but this is case Z twenty dash zero one seven, the applicant is Nicola Flora, sixty-seven Clifton Place.
No, uh, you're right. I don't I don't think we did.
That's okay, but now you're. It's all yours, Mr. Weinberg.
Okay, thank you. First, I'd like to comment that uh the applicant communicated with Councilman Robinson and also Michael Griffin of the Bergen Communities United. And um I have an email from Mr. Griffin, which was also sent to the planning department. And that he reviewed the plans, there were no objections, he had noticed some of the neighbors, they had no objections and Councilman Robinson also had no no objections with this. This is an application to take a an existing non-conforming three u- three-unit building and expand and upgrade it into a um six-unit building. I'm gonna have two witnesses tonight, Raul Cabado, who's gonna be the arch, who's the architect that drew the plans. And Carolyn Wurstel, who is our planning witness. And uh, I'd like to ask uh, Mr. Cabado to be. I think the board can take both of these uh witnesses and recognize their um being licensed and experienced. So, Raul. Would you start out?
Yeah, but both are have been previously sworn in uh this evening, right?
Yes, I have.
And and so and we continue to accept the qualifications of both experts. So, thank you.
Thank you. Raul?
Yep.
Would like to start?
Uh, can everybody see the screen?
Yes.
Now, yeah.
Yes.
Great. So the proposed project is located in an R one zoning district. Uh, the existing premises is four stories and has three dwelling units with a total floor area of about four thousand six hundred fifty-eight square feet. We are here to request variances for the following, to allow for the expansion of this existing non-conforming use. To allow a four-story structure where three stories is permitted. To allow a twenty-foot rear yard. To allow an eight-foot aisle width as well as compact parking spaces at the garage. We are, we are proposing um an additional three units with a combined floor area of five thousand one hundred eighty-two square feet, as well as a garage for four cars on the basement level. The proposed addition shall also be four stories and approximately thirty-eight and a half feet high to match the existing structure. The total gross floor area of the existing structure and the proposed structure shall be about nine thousand eight hundred forty square feet. The existing lot is irregularly shaped with an area of five thousand two hundred eighty-four square feet. And and it has a maximum depth of over uh one hundred eleven feet. The width of the lot where the primary structure is, which is right here, is about forty-two and a half feet. At the rear, the lot extends approximately ninety-two feet and is over eleven feet in uh depth. The proposed addition shall have a rear yard setback of approximately of uh twenty feet. The rear yard shall be uh landscaped. There exists a a drop curb at the front of the premises, approximately nineteen feet nine inches in width. This is to be reduced to uh ten feet. We originally proposed the planting of two trees. Uh, let me just show you right here. We, so we originally um proposed the planting of two trees um in front of the building. However, please note that there is an existing encroachment right around here in front of the property. Um, at the instruction of Jersey City's Principal Engineer in her letter dated January twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one. She requested that one of the street trees should be eliminated, this one right here. Uh, due to the lack of required five-foot pedestrian clearance. However, we believe the west tree does have the clearance and uh we're still proposing that tree. We made an effort to have strips of landscaping in the front yard where we could. We also proposed um get to the next screen. So we made an effort to have strips of landscaping um in the front yard where we could. We also proposed planters in the existing uh front portion of the building that encroaches on the sidewalk. We all, as as stated previously, we also proposed pervious pavers on the driveway. We're also proposing uh landscaping in a majority of the rear yard. Sheet. Z one zero two shows the type of uh landscaping that we are proposing. Also, it shows the proposed uh planters in the front yard right down here. Part of the basement level shall be used as a garage for four cars. There shall also be bike parking for six bicycles and a sprinkled pump room. Uh, refuse shall be located in the rear. Uh, adjacent to the stairs. There exists a dwelling unit at this level, which is to remain in accordance, in accordance with building code requirements, this unit shall be handicapped, adaptable. The basement unit shall also have bedrooms at the rear on the first floor, but the total unit shall be fourteen hundred square feet in area. As stated earlier, the first floor shall contain bedrooms at the rear. So these are the bedrooms, there's an accessory stair going down to the basement uh where the kitchen and the bathrooms are, but these are the bedrooms upstairs. Um, also, in this level shall be a two-bedroom, two-bathroom unit with an area of over sixteen hundred square feet. Sheet one zero two, um, the second and third floor units are similar in layout and shall contain two apartments per floor. The front unit shall have, the front unit shall have two bedrooms and two and a half baths and shall have an average area of about thirteen hundred square feet. The rear units shall have two bedrooms and one bathroom and shall have an an average area of approximately nine hundred nineteen square feet. Uh, proposed at the roof shall be uh one thousand three hundred thirty-eight square foot rooftop rooftop deck, which shall be an amenities pace for the occupants. There shall also be a green roof elements at the front of the aforementioned deck, which will extend more than ten feet from the front by the entire width of the 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 roof. The green roof elements, um the green roof elements consist of self-draining plant trays. This particular system was selected for its ease of installation, reasonable cost and easy maintenance. The modular nature of the system ensures that replacing parts become effortless. The benefits include stormwater management, reduction of the heat island effect, reduction of energy usage, noise reduction. In addition to the visual and aesthetic benefits, also proposed are planters. Up here. Also, on the roof will be uh condensing units for the units below. Details of the roof decking can be found on sheet A one zero four. And details of the green wa- uh green roof elements can be found on sheet A four hundred. So the primary facade front in Clifton Place consists of three materials, brick, uh metal panels and wood sidings. The center bay will be clad in uh wood siding. The area of the existing structure to the right, as well as the garage shall be clad in brick and the area of the proposed proposed addition above the garage shall be class uh clad in metal panels with oversized windows. The side and the rear yard shall be clad in vinyl siding. And all the materials are indicated on sheet A five hundred. That concludes my testimony. Thank you.
Thanks, Raul.
Hey, I have uh no questions for Mr. Cabado at this point. I'd like to call Carolyn Wurstel to uh testify.
Great. Good evening, everyone. Again. Um, so for this application, uh, we are requesting that a D two variance for expansion of a non-conforming use. Um, it is a um existing non-conforming three family and we're seeking to expand it um to permit uh from three units to six units. In talking about the positive criteria here, um, this is an oversized lot that can accommodate associated impacts with additional units. Um, it's five thousand two hundred eighty-four square feet, um, so a little over twice the size of your typical um uh lot in the R one district. Um, the proposed density for this project is about fifty dwelling units per acre and it's consistent with other multifamily buildings on the block. Um, particularly right across the street, um, are several uh multifamily buildings with about seven units in them. Uh, which is about eighty-one dwelling units per acre. In addition, uh, just to the north of the site is the beacon. So obviously, uh, very high um density um multifamily development. Um, the units themselves are appropriately sized. Um, you know, average uh two-bedroom around seven hundred and twenty-seven square feet, three-bedroom around uh sixteen hundred square feet. The other thing furthermore, we're we're asking for that uh height variance. Um, this is an existing non-conforming four-story building. Um, it's got the basement and the three stories above. Um, but is contextual to the neighborhood. Um, heights here do range from about two stories to over twenty stories at the beacon. Uh, but typically, the buildings along this west side of Clifton Place are these sort of four stories um due to the sloping character of the lot. So you do have sort of that really exposed um uh basement level at the front and then the three um stories above. Um, so it is um typical of the lot and the uh um additions are going to be designed to match the existing heights of the the building um to provide that seamless transition uh within the existing structure to the addition. Overall, the project is designed is will look is looking to eliminate several non-conforming conditions of the 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 site. Um, including removal of the front yard parking um and decreasing that existing non-conforming curb cut and driveway wist on the property from that uh about nineteen feet down to ten feet. Uh, so about reducing it by half. Um, and overall, the aesthetic improvements uh which include the new modern facade will unite the existing structure and the proposed addition uh with all new windows and siding, um, as well as the new um front yard landscaping um along by the driveways. Um, and the new sidewalk and street tree. There are a couple of other um bulk variances that are required here. Um, we do need a rear yard setback variance, um, or twenty feet is proposed and twenty-five feet is typically required. Um. We are providing, um, you know, a a rear yard uh that is going to be landscaped and is going to provide that um adequate light and air to the adjacent properties. Um, including there's a, there's a secondary structure to the north of us to the um uh along the rear lot line of the adjacent property to the rear. Uh, but there will be that twenty-foot step back. We are gonna, we do, are seeking the variance for the uh front yard landscaping. Um, we're providing eighty-nine square feet in the front yard by the two um on either side of the driveway. Uh, where two hundred and twelve square feet uh is required. Um, the landscaping as designed is trying to maximize the space, not dedicated to the driveway or walkway. Um, in addition, we do have that existing porch, um, which is going to have new uh planters on it. The overall, the project will have a compliant building and lot coverage of fifty-seven percent building and seventy-six percent of lot coverage respectively, and is going to have a um approximately one thousand one hundred and sixty square foot uh landscaped rear yard. So overall, this this project is providing, um, again, that benefit of eliminating the front yard parking. Um, and we are providing four off-street parking spaces um within the basement level. Um, there is a variance required for the um parking aisle driveway width, um, which is about eight feet nine inches. And we're providing it for these um compact cars um to provide that sort of um the benefit of parking while eliminating the front yard parking, which exists on the site today. The project will provide six indoor bicycle parking spaces, one per dwelling unit, um, as well as decreasing that curb cut and driveway wist um along the properties uh the the front of the property. Overall, the project does uh advance the purposes of the municipal land use law. The uh development, the project would uh be an appropriate use and development of the uh the property. Um, and it's consistent with the character of the neighborhood, uh, which has many other multifamily uh dwelling units um of similar density and height. Additionally, uh, it will uh advance purpose B to secure safety from fire, flood and panic, uh particularly uh the flood uh with um new landscaping in the front yard, permeable pavers on the driveway, um, and a new green roof. So we're truly trying to uh to uh uh provide some of that additional storm uh benefit um uh in those areas. Consistent with um purpose C, the project maintains existing front yard and side yard setbacks and provides a rear yard setback that will provide adequate light, air and open space. Um, and the project will promote appropriate population densities and concentrations uh consistent with um purpose E, um, as well as. As well as advancing purpose I, it's going to have a, promote the desirable visual environment that the building is contextually appropriate with the neighborhood and will have that new front facade as well as the front yard landscaping improvements. Addressing the negative criteria, the proposed variances are granting the variances will not result in a substantial detriment to the public good or the general welfare. The project is contextual to the surrounding neighborhood, which contains a variety of housing densities and building bulks and provide off-street parking, new landscaping and new sidewalks, as well as eliminating that nonconforming front yard parking and there the existing nonconforming curb cut and driveway. The variant, granting the variances will also not result in a substantial detriment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan and will advance several land use objectives of the city's 2000 master plan, including protecting and preserving residential neighborhoods, providing a consistent infill with a project designed to complement the existing setbacks and designs of buildings in the block and providing housing densities appropriate to the character of the neighborhood. As such, both the positive and negative criteria have been met to support the granting of these variances. So if anyone has any questions.
May you, does anyone have any questions at this time?
I have a question for Ms. Warstow.
Sure.
So, um, under your, your testimony reflected several times that it's, this project is contextually appropriate to the, the neighborhood. But the main example that you cited about appropriate density is, is the, the beacon, which is like a totally inappropriate comparison because that project was about putting density in a place that's recognized as an architectural jewel. Can you give us a few examples of other buildings in, in the neighborhood where this is appropriate density?
Of course, yes. So there are actually three buildings directly across the street from us, 66 Clifton Place, 68 Clifton Place and 70 Clifton Place. Each of those buildings have seven units for a density of 81 dwelling units per acre. There are also additional ones up the street. 101 Clifton Place is 25 units, which is 174 dwelling units per acre. In addition to the rear of us are also several multifamily units. These are on Summit Avenue, 154 Summit Avenue has eight units, 60 units per dwelling acre. 156 Summit has eight units at 67 dwelling units per acre. So there's, there's a number, number in the neighborhood.
Yeah, no, I, I just wanted to get something else sent to the record, so thank you, thanks for that.
Thanks, Kate. Anyone else from the board have any questions, comments? Okay, anyone from the public have any questions or comments? Lindsay, anyone?
I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, then let's close the public portion. Any staff comments?
Right, so my staff report is dated January 25, 2021. So as you heard, they're seeking to expand a nonconforming three family in the R1 to a six-family building. This is an oversized, it's over double the typical R1 lot size of 25 by 100 with 5,284 square feet. It's also in a regular shape, it's a flag-shaped lot. So the existing structure is four stories, so the applicant is seeking to expand that existing building footprint and continue that nonconforming height. So in addition to the D2 useful, that's, it's, they're expanding that, that nonconforming use and, and height, excuse me. So, in certain circumstances, site improvements can be sufficient reason to justify expanding a nonconforming use. And so the applicant is proposing to update the facade of the existing portion of the building to match this addition. And the proposed site plan includes new landscaping and permeable pavers. Also, as I stated before, at 5,284 square feet, this property is more than double the size of the typical R1 property. The unit sizes proposed are appropriate size, the side and front yard setbacks are met. And as we were just going over, there are a number of multifamily buildings in the area. And so with that, staff recommends approval with the conditions in my staff report. And happy, be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Lindsay, the, I, I just, I wasn't sure when I looked at a map that this was this close to the, the beacon, is the
Yeah.
Very big building just down the street on Clifton, that's part of the beacon complex?
One second, so I'll share my report that has just the map of the different zoning districts and if that's what you're asking, I could also share just a aerial map.
There's probably other people on, on the call more familiar with me.
It's a little blurry, but this is the subject property, this is the beacon redevelopment area. Some, a fair amount, and so it's kind of at a convergence of a couple of different zones here.
Yeah, and, and that's, this is on the, the downside of, of the slope.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, well, thank you.
It, it, it's close, when we used to pick my father up at the Margaret Hague, we end up on Clifton Place a lot, so, yeah, it's close.
I see that now, but yeah, it's, it's like probably a place I, I've been to like once, ever.
And just for another view, this is the subject property, this is the beacon right here, so it is like right across the street. And these are the other multifamily buildings Carolyn was talking about and the other multifamily buildings on the rear side, so just to kind of support that visually.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for staff or for the applicant at this time? Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion? I mean, I, I'm not saying, I mean, we haven't, I think there's good justifications for this, I, I guess I would, I would, if anyone wants to think about it, I, I would probably argue that the, potentially, that the buildings across the street, which are right on the Palisade. I mean, that, that seems to be why there's higher density, looking at, you know, this stuff maybe historically than on the other side of the street. But I don't, I, you know, I don't see that as something weighing against the decision, it just looks like they're, you know, going along with what Carolyn said, absolutely, it looks like there's higher density on the other side of the street. But again, those are built right into the Palisade with straight, you know, views over downtown Jersey City.
I'll make a motion to approve application Z20-017 with staff recommendations.
Second.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Patel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Shadid?
Yes.
Vice Chair Donnelly?
Yes.
And Chairman Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries all in favor with conditions.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the board and staff for all the help.
Thank you very much, good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Good night, evening.
You too, thank you, thank you all.
Thanks, and I do see a hand raised, Nick with your hand raised, we did open and close public comment previously. Not sure if you raised your hand on purpose or not, but that that portion was closed.
Okay.
So we have two resolutions to memorialize, shall we do that now, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, the first is The applicant was John and Mary Ann LLC. The address was 80 Romaine Avenue. Present on January 14th was Chairman Jacobs, Commissioners Donnelly, McCormick, Shadid, Rothman and Mitchell. That application passed, six in favor, none opposed, all in favor of memorializing that. And the second and last resolution to memorialize is Z18-064. The applicant is Pronti Construction, Inc. The address was 201-205 Randall Avenue. That was the one-year extension. There were seven commissioners present that evening. Lindsay, this is the one where the resolution says that it pass five in favor, two opposed, but all seven voted in favor of that. That was on February 6th. Present were Chairman Jacobs, Vice Chair Donnelly, Commissioner McCormick, Rothman, Netret, Velardo and Shadid. So all in favor of memorializing that? And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Well, well, thank you very much, and thank you to, it seems like we have a lot of new commissioners, I'm sorry I missed the very beginning of the meeting, but welcome to the zoning board, I'm very excited to, you know, have a lot of new enthusiastic faces. Maybe at some point in 2021, we'll meet in person.
I, I, I got a question, is Chet still here?
No, Chet moved, he, he resigned from the board and he moved to South Carolina.
Oh, oh, wow, I wish him best, I didn't know that, okay. Anybody else, anybody else?
It was a real secret goodbye.
Anybody else want to move to South Carolina?
Yeah, so, but Rich is still here though, right?
Rich is here, he's, he's in Rhode Island.
Yes, he's in Rhode Island, okay, so, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Maybe he'll be back next week, because we'll all meet again next Thursday, correct?
Yes, next Thursday.
Any other members that left the board?
That I know of, no.
Is Nick still here?
Nick Grillo?
Yeah, no, 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 the other Nick.
Now, are we still on the record? I'm just curious, just give Bridget a break, I see her still typing.
Let's go off the record, yes.
Sorry.
You're going off the record, you're making a motion to go off?
Yes, we are.
Yeah, make the motion.
Make a motion to close the meeting.
Yes.